Everybody here?
Um.
Ready, Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Charlie. It's all right, Charlie.
I'm okay.
You sure?
I just need to find a tissue. But you keep going.
I want me to do that for the pledge?
That's fine.
Call the meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge, please.
Please apply.
I pledge to lead justice and democracy in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business tonight is approval of the minutes from November 1st, which was our budget hearing. Everybody get the minutes?
Yes.
Any discussion? Motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Moving right along. Got a big agenda.
Before we go to public comments, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So, I thought the presentation of Finance Committee last night went very well. And after the meeting, I talked to a number of parents who were in the room, and I got a little discouraged because some of the parents that I talked to were pretty despondent. And I just wanted to make a statement that I don't think now is the time for despondence. Because one of the things that I felt was very encouraging about the meeting last night was the sheer number of people and advocates for, you know, the betterment of the school system. I can understand why there was some frustration in the room because as I was looking around, and I had a chance to reflect on the meeting from last night, and, you know, as I was looking around at the Finance Committee and as they were listening and asking questions, I was sort of noticing some literal and figurative shrugs in the room, which I felt to be sort of, you know, discouraging. So I can understand why parents could be a little bit taken aback and discouraged by the whole thing. In fact, a couple of the folks that I talked to even said in so many words like they were ready to give up. I just want to say now's not the time to give up. Because from, for the year and a half that I've been here, I haven't seen such a, you know, a big group and a passionate group of people to attend any of those meetings. So I would say that now's probably the time to start to gather some momentum and work with the, you know, the parents and the families in the community and, you know, be able to build some sort of a strong and unified voice for the betterment and the improvement of the schools. That's all I wanted to say.
Absolutely. Thanks, Matt. I agree. I fielded some phone calls and text messages today from parents who are frustrated and they're not sure how to proceed. And I think understanding the reality of the town's financial situation as laid out to us can be discouraging, but I think we're laying the groundwork for what needs to happen in the future for the schools. So, yeah, I hope people remain involved and don't get discouraged. So, thanks.
Yeah, and I just would like to say the, um, all of us have children in the public school system, and I'd say categorically, all of us are enthusiastic supporters for the public schools. But the meeting last night, I think we finally broke through to communicate that what we believe has been the case for at least five years is that the schools have been funding at a level that is inadequate to keep pace with the demands. I think what last night's meeting didn't provide was the opportunity, and I don't think it was the right forum, to also express how many things are going right in the public schools. So if you had just dropped into that meeting, you might have gotten the impression from all of us, including Dr. Antonucci, that the school in some way is in a state of crisis. That's not true. It's a slow-moving, um, problem as opposed to something which is cataclysmic. So I think we just need to continue to strike a balance because it's very hard to say we don't believe the town is supporting the schools at the level that's necessary and not come across as being potentially negative, right? So I think we're all so positive about the things in the school, but last night's meeting wasn't really the forum. And I hope any of the parents who attended didn't get the misimpression that that's our primary view of the schools, right? I just think if we don't do something, we don't take corrective action, we're not going to be where the community wants us to be and where our students, I think, demand us to be going forward. So I think that, I got a little bit of feedback like, oh my gosh, that's, we all sounded so negative. It's not that. I don't think we've been heard that the level of funding hasn't been supportive of what the schools have needed. And I'm so positive on the experience my children have had. I wish they were coming 10 years later because I think the students in Duxbury will have great experiences in the future. But I'm super grateful for the experience that my kids have had and one still in high school today. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say that everyone just has to understand the context last night. Dr. Antonucci was there asking for a level services budget and not expecting to get it, being told that we were $300, $300,000 too high. So, of course, in that context, you're not going to put forward and say, actually, we're doing fantastic things in the school. Because then Finance Committee's response is, why do you need the $300,000? So, you know, the presentation at that meeting was focusing on what we can do better. But I think if one attends these meetings on a regular basis, we hear fantastic stuff. And, and that's what we appreciate. But obviously, last night, the situation was something different than what we usually encounter in this forum. So you're right that, you know, it was a different tone last night, but for a purpose.
I was, I, Julie, you know, we, I talked to Peter at the meeting. We celebrate our students and our staff 24/7, 24/65 days. All you have to do is follow, follow us.
That's right.
I mean, we're literally on social media, but just in general, you know, the newspaper, these meetings.
Yeah.
But I agree. Going to a Finance Committee meeting advocating for more funds is not, is not the forum to celebrate.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I don't, I think that's maybe an excuse coming from some people, you know, on the committee. And that's, that's just an unfair and out-of-place criticism. We are so proud of what we do here every day, and so, but, you know, when you're asking for more money, that's not the time and place.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm gonna move on to that. We're gonna move on to public comment, and I assume there are people in the room that wanna speak. I just wanna preface public comment tonight. Well, I wanna do a couple of things. We have two agenda items that I assume people are gonna talk about, one being the DUCPlex and one being the budget, hopefully. As far as the DUCPlex goes, we've decided that we're gonna table our motion. We're not gonna vote on a motion tonight, but we fully recognize that Mr. Walsh has put forth information that he is indicating he would like to change the DUCPlex to a medical marijuana growing facility site. And, and it came to us because of the proximity to the schools. So we're not gonna vote on it tonight. There's been stuff on social media, and we've received some letters. I spoke with Ted Flynn from the Board of Selectmen. He told me that they are going to place it on their agenda for the next meeting. And I think because there isn't a request or a proposal in front of the Board of Selectmen right now, that we would be premature to take an action, if that makes sense. But we absolutely are happy to hear from people. And then the other, I was just gonna say, we also have public comment again at the end of the meeting. So if something comes up in the budget or if you have questions, there's an opportunity to speak again. So do we have anybody for public comment after all that? No? Did I scare you? All right. Yeah. Okay, reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Just two quick things. Actually, and I won't repeat it, but I, one of the things I was gonna do is thank the dozens of people who showed up last night to the Finance Committee. I was, I was really encouraged in, it's just the beginning of a continuation, I think, of a really important education process. So I really appreciate everybody coming on a cold and rainy night, and, so I just wanted to say that, just to follow up what you all said. But just two other quick things. Just wanna give a quick update on the strategic planning process. A lot of you are engaged in some way, but we continue to move on in that process. Our survey, I believe, is closed actually, as of two days ago. And we got all, we got over, or almost, I should say, 900 responses.
Great.
I will tell you, that is a, it's an insanely high number for any kind of survey you do for schools. So that was, that was really encouraging. We haven't, I haven't begun to analyze it yet. I'm not sure if anybody's analyzing yet, but that, thank you to everybody who took the time to fill that out. Our subcommittees have continued to do all their work. We have had a series of forums. We've had student forums, staff forums, and open community forums. We had our own community forum last week. Again, thanks to everybody who was showing up and participating. They've been really informative and interesting. The next open forum, and, you know, anybody's welcome, is on November 28th at 7:00 PM. Is that also at the high school?
Yes.
Not the high school, middle school library? And then the next meeting of the Steering Committee, the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, is actually a full day on December 3rd. So just wanted to say, we continue to work on it. Looking forward to seeing it coming together, but it's, it's been kinda busy and productive at the same time. So that's it for that. And then I just wanna make another advertisement, really just a reminder for the committee, but we have another meeting, a joint meeting coming up on November 22nd.
Twenty-sixth.
What did I just say?
Twenty-second.
Like, looking at a six and saying it too. November 22nd, sorry. And so, just wanna clarify what that is. So it's the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Finance Committee, and Fiscal Advisory. That meeting is focused solely on capital, the capital budget. I was all unsure about that when I saw that, that notice, but I confirmed yesterday that it's just capital budget only. So some of you might have been there last year for a similar meeting, and I'll just do a kinda little presentation that we did here for capital at that meeting.
Okay.
So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Klingman?
No, I just wanted to give you all an update about the district committees that have been meeting so far this year. We have five district committees. The District Curriculum Committee, which is co-chaired with me, Jim Donovan, and Rita Marie Benoit. We met on October 15th. This year, the math curriculum is under review, and we'll have a full math curriculum report at the end of the school year to present to you based on the work that the math subcommittee will be doing, as well as the School Works review that came in to do the middle and high school review at the beginning of the school year. Our next District Curriculum Committee meeting is February 25th. We have a District Professional Development Committee that is co-chaired Heather Tucker and I. We're gonna be meeting on Monday next week to discuss district professional development, both on our PD days for next year, as well as our district PD opportunities that occur on an ongoing basis. We try to embed PD for staff members whenever possible throughout the year. Teachers take courses offered in and out of district. We have professional book groups occurring. We have technology trainings happen, happening frequently, and teachers are doing certification programs such as Google Certification. Some of the Chandler teachers are doing that. Our teachers attend conferences, engage in PLCs, and participate in virtual trainings and ed chats. So we'll be meeting next week on that committee. Digital Literacy Committee has monthly meetings. That's also co-chaired with Cheryl Lewis. And so at the end of the school year, we hope to have a completed district technology plan that's updated. We have Social Emotional Learning Committee. That's our most popular committee this year, that we had the most educators and administrators let us know that they wanted to participate in that because it's important to them. We're meeting tomorrow, and we meet monthly throughout the year, and we have subcommittees doing work to streamline our SEL initiatives throughout the district. So we'll have a report at the end of the year for you in that area. And then also, I wanted to bring to your attention, it's a school committee policy that we have, a School Wellness Advisory Council. This is a school committee policy. It's co-chaired this year by Melissa Laidlaw, our new DMS, DHS team chair, and Kathy Carney, who's our district lead nurse. We have our first meeting scheduled for December 10th at 3:30 here at Alden, and we actually need a school committee rep on that committee, so if anyone is interested in participating, if you could let me know, that would be great.
Your first meeting is December 10th?
December 10th at 3:30.
We're all writing that down.
As Danielle just said that, Peter, I know you had asked me, I forgot to respond, but you probably got an email about that yesterday. I'm sorry, that was, probably wondered where that came from, but...
Oh, that went to all of us?
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't realize it was going out. You can let us know.
We can let them know. December 10th at 3:30.
If anyone besides me is shocked, that is Thanksgiving next week.
When we're booked in December, yeah. It's crazy. All right, so we'll, we'll figure out who's gonna be the rep, school committee rep. All right, Dave?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
A few weeks ago, we hired Rich Labrie, a transportation consultant, to review our special ed vocational and our large yellow buses. The review will look for better routes, pricing, and efficiency. Transportation costs are rising mainly in special ed and vocational area. We hope the study will find some savings. I have sent Miss Labrie bus contracts, bus routes, bus policies, and much more necessary information to do the study. I look forward to seeing the report. Transportation has really gone up in the special education vocational area, and the more efficient we can be, the better. So I think it's...
So what's accounted for then?
Well, vocational, vocational, we have more children going to vocational schools like South Shore Vocational and Norfolk Aggie, which is way in Walpole. And special education, the services without a district, and so basically you have to get the children there. So the prices are, they're very difficult at this point.
It's a business that doesn't have much competition among the region, regions, and so the prices historically kinda rise at rates, and as fuel prices increase too, you know, it makes it about that, but we're just at a point now, where we're not, we're not alone at all, but we just decided it was time to look at, look at the efficiency of our routes. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to give you an update that we're still working on that.
Yeah, when do we send the report? All right.
Probably in a couple of months. Probably in November, probably January, so...
I'd be surprised if there would be a lot of new options for...
The, the, the hope is that there's, that an objective, an expert observer or consultant can look at our routes and come up with some...
Our standard bus routes.
Yeah, especially with the yellow bus, and also with, also with special ed.
And also, you wanna see if there's different talent that you could piggyback with? Like when I do the vocational routes, we have a small van drive the student to Kingston in the morning, but then they get on a large yellow bus, but there's also kids from Pembroke, Plymouth, Kingston, and then we drive to Middleboro and pick up more students, and then they go to Norfolk Aggie and Walpole. So by piggybacking off with everyone else, we're sharing the cost.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, student rep is Jess. Hello.
So, we, the term one just ended last week, and we got our report cards back on Friday, so it's the beginning of term two. And DHS will be having their parent teacher conferences on November 15th from 6:00 to 8:00, and then DMS will be having their conferences on Thursday, November 29th. For the high school, we'll be having senior class days on November 30th through December 1st, so it's that weekend, so it's just an opportunity for like seniors to have a little bonding time. And they will also be having, seniors will also be having their senior breakfast on November 21st, which is kind of one of their few, like, big group activities before they graduate. And they'll be having that on a half-day. The sport, DHS sports registration is due by this Friday, and the winter sports begin the Monday after Thanksgiving, so November 26th. And Alden will be having, which I think is pretty new, I don't remember this, but a third grade celebration of learning on November 19th, and I assume that's...
It's theme night.
The, oh, okay. New name. And then middle school photo, or picture day retakes will be December 6th. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Picture retakes, that seems late. Nobody gets there. At least you have all your kids' pictures by Thanksgiving to give to the relatives.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, whatever. Okay, so my report, I, I just also wanna sort of piggyback on last night's meeting and just say, the DEF was there because they also had another meeting, but it was, I thought, really impressive that they all came and they're totally invested. And some of the feedback from them was that they would love to encourage any person who has not been in a school, and I think we said that too, in the last couple of years, to come see what we're doing. Because what they're granting to us and the things that we're doing in the schools, they felt that maybe it was not communicated or understood. So I just, I thought that was a really good request, that if we can get people into the schools, if they're questioning how schools run nowadays, that would be awesome. So my only other information, every year, there's a Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference in November. So I attended that last Friday, and my driving force was the general session, which I've joked about because Jim Browdy was there with, there was the head of the, they sort of were talking about politics today and how that affects the schools and all of our lives. So there was a panel, and it was really, really fun. But I, they're a breakout session, so I attended the role of the chair, obviously, because I wanted to learn more of the role of the chair. And, and really, they just sort of talked about honing policy review, and I think we're good at that. But going through all the policies, they were saying in some districts, their, their policies, they just have 500 policies, and they, they don't review them, so then you're just being redundant. But what I thought was interesting about policy was school committee policy supersedes handbooks. In Duxbury, we always vote on approving the school handbooks at our levels, but if for some reason we made a policy after we, that, that was a little bit different after we voted in the handbooks, our policy would still supersede the handbooks, which I thought was just sort of an interesting tidbit. My favorite was no one can address the school committee without the permission of the chair. I was like, ooh, I feel empowered. And just how we provide, and I liked this too, the, the school committee provides the what and the why about policy. It's not our job to decide the how, when, and where. That's obviously the job of, the people have to roll out that policy. And then we talk a lot about strategic planning because we're in a strategic planning meeting right now, or a cycle, and how a school committee really sets the tone for the district. And, and that is melding together, as we're seeing, because our strategic plan is also what we want to be the goal for the district. So I, I feel that in Duxbury, everything works really well. You know, when you're in a room full of all different towns and cities across the state, you see how things aren't as easy as they are here. I feel like we're, we work really well together, and it, and it's working. So it was fun to, to attend that. So I'm gonna stop talking, and we'll go on to discussion items. So I think first, we're gonna have a report on the updated social studies curriculum frameworks with Lou Alberdi. And anybody else you wanna bring up with you? Or is it just you?
No.
As Lou's setting up, I just want to say it was exciting actually to put two things on the agenda that were actually education-related, you know? Like you get, you're kinda mired in, in budget this time of year, so we're really excited to have Lou join us. Lou is familiar to you all probably, but he is, this is his first year at social studies.
You wanna sit? Where would you like me to sit? Anywhere?
Well, can you take...
Can you, can you, if you, if you want to stand, Charlie, can you hear at all?
Sit in with a microphone?
You always project.
I can project. I'll do it. I can do a teacher.
Do you wanna sit where I, do you wanna sit in my seat?
I'll sit there.
Yeah, just talk.
Yeah, I'll sit there.
Should I stop the music? We do this every meeting.
Hi, how are you? So I'm Lou Alberdi. I'm the social studies chair for DMS and DHS, so thank you all for having me, and Dr. Antonucci and Dr. Klingman for having me. So I'm just here to talk, so there's been some, some major changes that have been made with history and social science across the state in, in really the last couple of weeks since the elections. And so it started a couple of years ago, and so my goals really for tonight are just to kinda talk a little bit about the changes that are, that are upcoming and that are gonna affect us district-wide, K through 12, and then just talk a little bit about kind of where we're at in the process right now at DMS and DHS. So, so the vision for all of this really comes down to the renewal of a focus on civics. And so a few years ago, the Board of Higher Education and the Board, the state, basically approved to the already career and college readiness standards, a civic readiness standard. So that's actually been on the books since 2016. We really haven't done a lot with that because it's just kinda been sitting there. And so we've, we've implemented some civics in some of our curriculum, but it really wasn't necessarily something that the, the state was pushing out to, to districts or schools. And so, so that's kind of been sitting there for, for about two years. At the end of last year, the state approved new history and social science frameworks. And so we got drafts of that at the end of school last year, and we were given opportunities to participate in different workshops and different webinars and conference calls and things like that to just talk a little bit about the rollout of that. And then in the summer, in, in August, the state approved those frameworks. And so those frameworks essentially have been in effect since August of this, this year. So what that pretty much means for us is, I'm just gonna kinda skip over here, they have now created what are known as the three pillars of history and social science. And so at one point in time, history really was just focused on content, and now what they're doing is they are including other areas as well and focusing on those areas, so it's not just content-specific, but it includes content, practice, or what they call standards for history and social science practice skills, and then also those literacy and media skills, which they have been building as well into the frameworks across different curriculums. So one of the things that they have set up for us are what they refer to as the guiding principles. So there were originally nine of them until the summer, and then at the end of the summer, they added an SEL component, so that now is number 10. And this is just the slide that the state gives us to kind of share with districts and, and to school committees, so that you can see kind of where we are going to start to slowly implement these into our curriculum and make sure that students across the board are getting access to these SEL standards. And so they're taking the, the five self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, and just showing areas where we can hit those in, in our history and social studies classes today. So as a department, we are slowly starting to take a look at these. We are starting to work together and, and starting to find ways where we can build them into our current curriculum. This is just to give you, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with kind of the scope and sequence currently, but this is the K through 12 sequence currently under the new frameworks. So you'll notice, there's not a whole lot of changes in the, in the early elementary levels, but I do highlight third and fifth grade. Third and fifth grade, you know, basically the state has asked that those courses, that the, the order, the chronological order of those courses is strictly followed. So that has required Rita Marie Benoit and I, Sarah Milliner at Chandler, we have been working really closely together to try to, you know, figure out and get ourselves aligned so that those, that those courses are hitting those standards. Because in the past, you know, there may have been teachers in the fifth grade that weren't necessarily covering all of the things that the state now is asking for us to, to make sure that we're covering. And those are really building blocks and the pillars for the middle school and high school. And so this is really where we are gonna, you know, see a major shift. The, the current DMS curriculum is going to have to change, and so we are currently meeting and working in subcommittees and working together with the teachers to try to kind of figure out what that's gonna look like. But if you look, so currently, right now, there is a world geography course that is taught in sixth grade, and then a world one and a world two that are kinda hit in seventh and eighth grade. That now is going to have to shift backwards. So what they've done is, they've taken kind of the, some of the world, world standards and the geography standards, and they've combined them into two courses that the students would get in sixth and seventh grade, and then they've created an entirely new... would get in sixth and seventh grade, and then they've created an entirely new, uh, United States Massachusetts Government and Civic Life course, uh, that is now going to be a required course for every eighth grader, starting ideally in two years. Um, there is also talk, and it has not been approved, of also an assessment piece that potentially could come in the eighth grade. Uh, whether that's an MCAS or something like that, we don't know, they, they haven't decided on that yet.
Can I just ask a question? So do you think geography would be sixth grade and ancient civ seventh grade? Or is it gonna be a combination of both of those years?
Yeah, a combination. So right now, what we're talking about is potentially world civilizations, uh, being broken up into kind of two categories, and then covering the geography piece of those areas. So for example, in sixth grade, and this is just a hypothetical, it could be world geography and eastern civilizations, and then world geography and western civilizations in seventh grade. So, um, and that's something that we, 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 we plan on presenting at some point, um, to run a pilot next year, so that the current fifth graders go into the middle school with that scope and sequence kind of in place. Uh, and at the high school, um, they've kind of made life a little bit difficult as well, because they're, they're essentially taking the eighth grade class and dumping most of that top, uh, most of those topics into the high school. So right now, they are asking the, you know, at the high school, to essentially teach four classes, um, you know, which, right now, we currently teach three classes. We teach world history two to freshmen, and then US one and US two to sophomores and juniors, and then, uh, you know, a variety of electives, sophomore year, all the way up. So, um, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take the next year or so and, and try to get creative, and, and, and working with the teachers and, um, committees to try to figure out what that's gonna look like, and then we'll have a better idea, hopefully by the end of this year or early into the summer, what that might, um, you know, might come out to be. Because we really can't do anything right now with the, the current eighth graders, 'cause they're gonna come into the high school, they've gotta be kind of lock and step with the sequence that's in place now, so that they at least get the US piece on the, on the back end. Um, if we were to change anything at the high school, that could, they could double up a sophomore year, if, if they were to take, you know, um, world history, uh, two, uh, well, yeah, they, they're, they're actually, they just, in order to keep them in, in the same sequence that they're in now, we can't do anything at the high school until two years. We have to wait for the current seventh grade to come in. And this is just the new eighth grade civics course, so this is essentially just kind of the topics that are being asked, uh, to, to be covered in that. Um, and then two days ago, or two days, excuse me, after the election, Governor Baker, uh, he had it for about two months, but he was clearly waiting for the election, uh, but he, uh, signed and passed a, a, a civics bill that unanimously went through the House and the Senate. And so now it is official that every eighth grade, uh, every eighth grade student, and , uh, and at least once in the high school, students are going to have to complete some sort of civics, uh, engagement project. And so, what that kind of looks like, um, this is just something, this is an organization, uh, Generation Citizen, which operates here in Massachusetts, uh, and this is something that they presented to us a, a few weeks ago at the state level, we, I was at a conference, um, and this is just something, you know, that they are proposing, uh, and, you know, and obviously they're trying to sell it, they're trying to go into schools and, and present this, um, where, you know, students pick an issue, they're gonna, you know, take the time to research the issue, they're gonna make some sort of action plan, uh, and then they are going to take some sort of action civically in the community, uh, or a community at large. So, uh, so that's coming, uh, and that's gonna probably be in effect, uh, as of 2020. That will be, uh, required for eighth graders, and then at least somewhere in the high school. And so, these are the new literacy, uh, and, um, literacy standards for history and social science, so there's, uh, reading, writing, and then speaking and listening. Um, these are also something that we're taking a look at and, and making sure that we're embedding into our curriculum, something, um, that we haven't done in a while, so we are updating all of our curriculum. Um, we are gonna have to take a look at our curriculum maps, um, there's a, you know, there's a variety of things that we're gonna have to do now, now that this is official. It was just kind of in limbo for a while, uh, it went through the House before the session ended, or the, you know, um, and then it just kind of sat with the governor for a couple of months. And so now that everything's kind of in place, we can now start to iron out some of the details. Um, and so that's really just kind of sets up, you know, where we're at right now. Um, so K through 12, we're all working together, looking at our scope and sequence. Um, we're, you know, basically talking about how it's gonna affect us, and where it's gonna affect us the most, and how we can implement that. And so right now, it's definitely the middle school, um, is gonna be the, the most effective immediate, um, most effective immediately, and then, uh, in two years, really, the high school. So, um, you know, we're just, we're meeting, we're working together with the teachers, we're working together, um, you know, six through 12, five through 12, just trying to get everything in line, so that we have some sort of idea of where we're gonna go by the end of the year.
Do you have teachers that generally like, they're, they're, they're your world history teacher, or they're your US teacher?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that's come up, is that we, we are, we have been, you know, dominant in one area over the other, um, but the, the teachers in the history department, um, you know, and, and I think that they all, you know, anybody will tell you this, that they all will take on anything that we can do. And we do have teachers that have taught US history in the high, uh, excuse me, in the middle school, um, you know, both eighth grade teachers, in fact, have taught US history, so they're very excited about the opportunity to do this. And at the high school, I would say, you know, probably 25% of the teachers right now that only teach US or an elective, have taught world history at some point. So, so that's something that, you know, I've had to think about a lot.
I, I just wanted, um, you know, it makes me feel great to live in Massachusetts when eighth grade and high school, we're gonna engage our students and actually commit them to become civically engaged. You think about how that can be transformative, it's super exciting, you know, millennials are voting at record-low numbers, they could change the world, but you have to vote, you have to get involved, you have to have a voice, so, uh, it's so exciting. I mean, I'm like, you know, gonna go, that's amazing. So good luck with that.
Well, thank you.
And I'd love to see those eighth graders in the community, and the high school kids in a couple of years, out in the community, um, making waves. I think it's, it's wonderful, so.
Do you feel like that's the impetus, uh, or the focus of the civic portion, civics portion of the changes, that it becomes more pragmatic, rather than just knowing how many presidents or how many members of Congress there are? It's more how to navigate the systems?
Absolutely, yeah, in fact, absolutely, because of, um, one of the, one of the actual proposals in the, um, and this is something we can talk about at a later date, but one of the proposals in the, the civics bill that was passed by the House and the Senate is actually communities building civic trust, uh, funds, uh, for school districts to be able to, um, to do these types of projects. Uh, and the state is actually going to also build one that can be distributed to, to districts across the state. I don't know how that's gonna work, that's their level, um, but, but that's coming as well. That's something that's actually built into the bill, that there's gonna be a trust fund set up so districts can have access to, to funding to do these type projects.
Right.
So, and then the assessment piece is just something that's gonna come down the road. Um, and that, that's something that, uh, I can tell you that the, the emphasis on that is the skills, the practice skills, um, and not so much the content. Um, but can students, you know, if we're both sitting in a room, and I have one DBQ and you have another DBQ, can we both answer the, the DBQ? And, and that's really what they want students to be able to do.
Right, okay. I noticed that, um, news and media literacy is, is elective at the high school level. And the way, I think, we all think about news has changed dramatically over the last, you know, number, number of years, where people can self-publish their own news and have that come out as being sort of credible news. Is there anything that you integrate into, like, specifically, like, at the eighth grade level, or that you're planning to, so US and Massachusetts Government Civic Life? Is there anything woven into the general curriculum around sort of how this, how the kids kind of think about news, and think about reading the news and media literacy beyond, or set aside from just the elective part?
Yeah, so most of our teachers do some sort of current events, um, and they do that in a variety of different ways. Some teachers actually read the newspaper, other teachers have, you know, um, you know, I, I use CNN 10, which is, you know, unfortunately, the only news, student-produced news, uh, it's a 10-minute segment that comes out every single day. Um, other teachers do, you know, there, we have Newsella, which we just, uh, was an organization that we just came in, uh, that came in that is, you know, presenting, uh, and is actually working with us to kind of create content, uh, for our students. So there are plenty of resource out, resources out there, and, and, and other than the ones the teachers already use, we are exploring that, um, specifically, because we, we, we know that that's important, and that's an important piece to the curriculum as well. So, uh, but to answer your question, yes, I mean, there's teachers, every teacher does something every day with current events.
Yeah.
Which I'm very proud of to say as a department, 'cause it, it is important.
And when we talk about that digital learning and computer science standards that Massachusetts passed a few years ago, um, one of the components of that is responsible research, and being able to find credible sources, and working with that. So when we talk about embedding those DLCS frameworks, that's pre-K to 12 scope and sequence that also covers that.
Right. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, thanks for having us.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay, next, we're gonna have a report on Credit for Life Fair. So we've got Brandon Jocelyn from the math department, curriculum supervisor.
So welcome to Brandon, and Brandon and Lou are the two newest members of our curriculum supervisor team. Great to have them both. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for having me. So yeah, I'm Brandon Jocelyn, the new, uh, sixth through 12 math, um, you know, curriculum coordinator.
And I'm Meg Radzick, I'm a math teacher and business, um, teacher, and I've been organized, um, yeah, I've been on the committee for the Credit for Life Fair since we started, so this is our fourth year running the fair.
Yes, I figured we'd, we'd return to a conversation of, uh, finance and budgeting from where we started. No, so I, you know, I think this is really a kind of a three-pronged attack between Meg, um, another high school teacher, Kate Donovan, and the, um, the senior center with Chris Cokely. Uh, this is my first year involved with it as the first-year curriculum coordinator, so there are certain things that I'm very new to, um, but as a member of the math department, I, every year I would walk over to the Steel Building and, you know, just kind of take it all in, 'cause it's a great experience for our kids. I'm only gonna talk a little bit about the fair itself, and then Meg will walk you through a little bit of what the students will do on that day. So the day is December 11th, which is Tuesday, uh, it's coming up pretty soon, actually. And basically, this started, the process started, I think, a couple of weeks ago, um, when we invited all the seniors down to the presentation hall to, um, you know, basically orient them to the program, what was expected of them that day, and everything like that. From there, they picked a career path, that's something that they may have been interested in. Um, and then, once we have the career path, we can decide, you know, we can look up the salaries and everything, that we'll talk about in a little bit as well. They also would select four out of their top six choices for workshops, which we're gonna talk about in a second as well, and then during the actual Credit for Life Fair, they would get to go to two of those four that they selected, just depending on numbers. During the fair, there'll be a couple keynote speakers at the beginning, Josh Cutler will be there to talk about the voting process to these, uh, you know, high school seniors, and then also, um, Jack Corbett, who's a portfolio manager at Morgan Stanley, will be there to kind of rev them up and get them ready to go for the day. And so, um, once those presentations are over, we'll give the kids their portfolios, and then they'll break up into one of two sessions. So we, we've basically booked the Steel Building across the street, which is where they'll go through with their budget, and, um, you know, purchase things, and then there's a whole bunch of different activities that are associated with that, where community members come in and run different stations. Um, and then while the other group is doing that across the street, there's also in-house six different workshops, also run by community members or former alumni, um, in which case students will do two of those workshops. And then halfway through the day, the two groups switch, and then basically they will go to lunch. From there, and then on the way out, they'll do an exit survey to basically, you know, figure out what they liked and what they didn't like, and how we can improve it, um, you know, for the next year's group. So the portfolios, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Meg to kind of talk about that stuff, 'cause she's certainly more in tune with, with that than I am.
Okay, so we customize the experience for each student, um, they get to choose their occupation that they are truly potentially interested in, um, and then we use statistical data as far as what would be starting salaries outside after, um, and we are, do look at jobs, um, all different types of jobs, so there are trades as well as, um, jobs that would require a, um, an, uh, um, college education. So they get to choose their, um, salary, uh, I'm sorry, they get to choose their career, and then we will give them their salary. We'll also give them, look, depending upon the amount of education needed, we will give them a student debt amount, um, which would be as accurate as we can determine from the amount of education that they would need for that position. Um, and as well, the credit scores are randomly selected, so we do start, when they start the fair, the students have to go, who do not have a very favorable credit score, have to go visit their credit counselors, and some of them need to get a second job from the start, some of them need to pay off some of their, um, debts, they can just start the fair experience.
That's randomly?
It's randomly selected, yes. So you could have, you, you could have someone, um, a physician with a, um, a great salary, but a very poor, um, credit score. So, um, and again, that is randomly selected, so we customize this experience for each of the students. Um, the community in Duxbury has been fantastic, so we've had so many, um, volunteers in the past that will staff all of the booths in the Steel Building, um, and the booths, I think we have some of the information.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, actually, let me talk about the, the, this is what the worksheet, so when the students receive their portfolio, each of the information will have their name, their occupation, salary, um, and all the details. You can see, it'll have information for their, I'm actually gonna go closer, so I can see a little bit, there are more details. Um, clothing, a clothing book, uh, clothing booth, credit lending booth, there is, um, a technology booth, there is a, um, um, as far as furniture booth, uh, rent, the students will, um, have to decide what they want to, if they want to purchase, uh, property, rent a property, um, transportation, um, there is, uh, car, um, yeah, and public transportation, so they need to, e- visit each of those booths. Most of the booths have three options that the students get to select, and then you can see, it's almost a, at a spreadsheet where the amounts will be calculated, so they have to select how much that would, how much that would cost them, all of their, um, expenses and their, um, are recorded, so that they're keeping a tally of their, what, what their monthly income, how much they've spent of their monthly income. There is a nice, um, random booth as well, where it's cross, uh, credit, the Wheel of Life, I think it is called, um, where they get to spin a wheel, they could win the lottery, they could get a flat tire, so they get, that's life, and they get to experience life, so that's kind of an interesting one.
Mostly bad.
Mr. Donovan has, um, has staffed that one last year, so that's kind of an exciting one. Um, so anyways, the students then, uh, once they visit each of the booths, and they have to go back to the credit counselor, and they help them just double-check the math, um, and again, some students, it's interesting, their experiences, they realize that they need to get a roommate, they need to get a second job, and they need to, they realize that, oh, life is expensive, you know, I have to buy that food, and, and it's funny how a lot of them think that they'll be going out to the movies, or go, and then, uh, they have to cut their, their, those tickets to the Bruins, or those tickets to the Celtics, when they realize that there's nothing left to fund that, and they'd rather eat than, than, than do the, some of the luxury items. So it is a great day, it's, um, they learn a lot, and we're really fortunate, again, we have a great community here, and people have been fantastic, um, so it's, it's one day that the students experience where we can, they do more, a- as far as real-life financial literacy than we could ever teach them in a day in a classroom. So it's, it's a great, it's really, I can't say, um, how valuable it is and how much the students get out of it. We have run it, this will be our third year with the whole senior class, the first year we did a trial run, we had about 75 students, and since then, we thought it was such an important, um, um, experience, so that all seniors needed to experience that.
Yeah, and I just, I also, I think I forgot to mention at the beginning, we do have three student helpers as well, that are kind of on our committee. Katie Cokely, Mia Cronin, and, um, Mia Schutler are all involved with it, and helping to do some of, um, you know, the salary checking for certain career paths, but a lot of the wed, a lot of the legwork is done by Meg right to my right here, um, in terms of getting this stuff ready for each individual kid, so that they can have a worthwhile experience at the fair.
Can I, um, just make an embarrassing confession, and I'm gonna embarrass Dr. Antonucci as well. I have a special topic, uh, for our Credit for Life this year, which is how to mail a letter. 'Cause I have three college-age children, I won't, um, embarrass them by name, um, and Dr. Antonucci has three as well, so I relate to him a story, um, one of my children was, um, mailing in their absentee ballot, which I was thrilled by, and, um, he or she said, um, "Do I put it in the blue box?" And I was like, "In the blue box? What do you, what do you mean in the blue box?" And then I, I figured, he or she meant the mailbox. Um, a little while later, I found out, shoot, I didn't realize I had to put it in the envelope to mail it back to the Duxbury town clerk with the stamp already on it, so stuck the absentee ballot directly into the mailbox. This unnamed child had never mailed a letter before, so I was telling Dr. Antonucci, and you had a similar, yeah, one of his children was sending something to a brother, and put it in his mail- sending something to a brother and put it in his mailbox at college, like, waiting for it to magically disappear to go to his brother. So a quick little breakout session.
Well, it took him two weeks to figure it out.
A quick five-minute, here's how you put something in the U.S. Postal Service, you know, it would be really, so I wouldn't assume any of this is known. I mean, in, in a sense, the kids are so, lack so much independence, that this is all, it can't be basic enough and do it over and over again, so it's wonderful, and it's great that you have the community engaged.
Yeah, no, and it's, you know, we, the math department runs the personal finance course, which I think a lot of kids find a lot of value in, but this is a way, I mean, that's elective, this is a way we can get to every single kid. And they dress up, they do wear, like, business attire for it, so it's, you know, it's, it's a nice little event. I was just gonna wrap up, basically talking about the different workshops as Meg kind of, this was everything that would be happening at the Steel Building complex. And then at the workshops, right, so maybe we'll do a seventh workshop headed by you and Mr. Antonucci to mail letters. But the six we have so far, yeah, the six we have so far, the first one would be, again, each, each kid would do two of these. But navigating your college campus, which we, um, you know, we're fortunate to get some, usually some pretty good alumni from Duxbury that are in college, it can relate to, you know, who to seek when you need help when you get to campus, what an RA does and, and stuff like that. It's a pretty interactive question-and-answer-based type of workshop. Career pathways in finance, you know, different avenues that you could take with a financial or business background. The road to retirement, which just teaches kids, you know, to invest, you know, 401Ks, 403Bs, 457s, Roth IRAs, reg, you know, all that stuff. The fraud alert, so just basically how the credit score can impact them. Thinking Outside the Box is a new one that we've added this year, that's, that's more of different opportunities for kids other than a traditional four-year college route, so some of it's gap year, some of it might be Teach for America opportunities, and different opportunities like that. And then we also do the job interview, which just teaches kids the importance of, you know, constructing a resume, what to expect, you know, what questions to ask, what to be prepared for and that kind of stuff. And they're all run by, again, either alumni or community members, it's an incredible base of help that we basically tap into every year, and it's, um, it's, it's a pretty wonderful event, if you ask me.
And if anyone wants to get involved, just contact us.
And, and in the exit interviews, how many kids say, "I'm just gonna live at home with my parents"?
Yeah. Save some money, right?
That's fantastic.
Both my kids did it. Lila did it in the pilot, and then Ruffus did it the next year, and they thought it was perhaps the most valuable day of their high school.
That's good to hear.
They both came home totally, uh, kind of fixed on being more independent and doing things for themselves, so it is a fantastic.
That's good to hear, and it's interesting, I remember one year, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, we went to the Steel Building, and one of my, one of my students looked at me and said, "What do I do?". I said, "It's life, figure it out. There's no prescribed, there's no teacher telling you, this is what we're gonna do today. It's, you need to visit these, you need to balance your, you need to make sure you're not in the red, and you have people to help you, but this is life." So I think that was an interesting perspective, just different from, you know, their everyday, their, um, school experience.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, interesting to me, because I work in, um, adult education, and thus, there are instructional shifts in adult education, um, as well, to go along with, uh, WIOA, the Workforce Integration, the Federal Act. And there, there's a huge emphasis on what's called navigating systems. So it's not only knowing that, for example, we have a social security system and a pension system, but it's actually how to go get a social security number. And so this kind of really pragmatic, how to ask the right questions, where to go, who to talk to, it's all part of being an adult, and, and adult education is now recognizing that. And so it's kind of nice to see that happening with Credit for Life, but also what, uh, Mr. Alberti was saying, that, you know, that the shift in civics education is more kind of pragmatic. How do I get in civically engaged on a kind of day-to-day basis? So it's really valuable stuff, and, and it's great to hear.
Thank you.
Good job, Meg.
Thank you.
Might, might contribute to some anxiety, though.
That's what I was thinking. You can't go broke. What are you gonna do?
You can't buy a book.
Do you, are you gonna project, John?
No, I haven't really projected yet.
Okay.
Can you project now? No, but, no, just, just in case. We're not gonna use that.
Okay. Well, that's what, yeah. Good info tonight.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, yep, yep.
All right, our next agenda discussion item is the, um, school department budget. Once again, I think a lot of people were there last night for our FY20 budget, um, public hearings, so we had open discussion earlier. What?
Nothing, I just, the, the, there's like a statutory requirement that just sort of compels us to actually open a hearing. So I just think we should, if you want, I don't know if you're planning to, but just, we should probably open the hearing, it's just a, it's a weird requirement, but.
Do we need to have all of us vote, or?
Um, I don't, I think you need to open a hearing.
Okay, I'd like to open a hearing into the FY20 school department budget, so this is our public hearing on that, and our school committee deliberation. So I, I'm wondering if there's anybody who has public comment on this, or is everybody here? That would be great. Don't remind me doing it that way.
That's great. There's no need to.
So just name and.
My name is Shannon Gudmund, I have two kids in the school system, and, um, I wanna start, and we've only been here for two years, this is our third year in the school system, before that, we were outside of Massachusetts. I wanna start by saying first, how grateful I am for people like you who are willing to commit your time to serve the town, the school community, and most importantly, our kids. And I'm directing that to the school committee, but of course, to the educators as well. I'm very grateful for that. It was evident to me both at the strategic planning meeting last week and at the finance committee meeting last night, that you're all engaged and invested and very knowledgeable about what the school system needs and some places it needs to go. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. As a parent who, who's been largely disengaged for the last two years, you have my attention. And I think that you also, based on the group of people that showed up last night and at the strategic planning committee meeting, I think, or strategic planning meeting, and probably the, the survey as well, I think you have a lot of people's attention. And I think that's a great thing. And what I'm hearing from members that I've talked to, you think it's a pretty great thing, too. There is a momentum that is turning now, that I feel like maybe is looking for a place to go. So I'll speak for myself, I feel a little at a loss about where to direct that energy now. So I'm coming to you to ask you, as a parent who's engaged, I wanna help. I do see the positive things about the Duxbury school systems, but, in, quite frankly, the Duxbury school system is why we bought a house in Duxbury. We drew a radius around Cambridge, where my husband works, and said, and we lived in Back Bay and then Hull and rented for six months to figure this out. And we looked in New Hampshire, and we looked all the way down to Duxbury. And the school systems, we only looked at schools that ranked, and I know the rankings are testy to talk about in some, in some formats, but it's what we had to work with. We didn't know anybody, and we didn't have realtors specific to Regions Two, and we were looking all over. So we used the rankings, and we plotted them. And in the end, Duxbury won, but only because it was within the top 45 schools on the list. If, if Duxbury had been 46, we wouldn't have looked at it. So, but the school system is largely why we chose this location, and we love the location, don't get me wrong. But a lot of people make their decisions that way, and it's a little, the, the conversations last night and from the week before, and, and the presentation you put together, Dr. Antonucci, about the finances, are certainly alarming. And I just wanna be part, I, what, my, I myself would like to be able to usefully engage, to be a part of the solution. And to, to make sure that we do what we can do as townspeople and parents, to support your efforts in whatever way is necessary to, to finance the schools the way they really ought to be financed, and the way I think that the community believes they are financed, whether that's accurate or not, which clearly it's not accurate. So I'm asking you tonight, and maybe you need some time to come up with the answers, but what can we do? What action can we take? We're ready to go.
Right.
Why do you, why do you think that, you mentioned in the first couple of years you weren't as engaged as you are now?
Yeah.
What do you think accounted for that?
Well, I was diagnosed with cancer a month into the school year, when we first moved here.
Right, so you had.
And so I normally would be more engaged.
Yeah.
But it was a long chemotherapy-ridden process to get through that, and my health is back where it needs to be, so for others, I can't speak to it completely. Although I have to say that, I think that the information that you've presented to the community about the financing and also about the programs and situations in the school that are in jeopardy, or are currently at kind of an alarming place with the class sizes and whatnot, I think, for myself, I can really only speak for myself, I had no idea. I had no idea. My kids, my kid is in one of the 29-person math classes, she didn't mention it. I didn't ask, 'cause I never would have expected for a class size at Duxbury to be above, you know, low twenties. And she didn't mention it, 'cause she doesn't know the difference either. She came here from a private school where, in the Netherlands, where the class sizes were 15. So, you know, it's an American school, it's an entirely different thing. But I think having that information out there and being able to see in black and white, particularly the thing that particularly moved me to action was the discrepancy in funding between the average school per pupil in Massachusetts and what we're funding here. And it concerns me, I, I just, and I listened to the numbers last night, I listened to what you put out there and what the finance committee came back with, and I also did some reading and got out my trusted calculator and did a little math. I mean, I think i- it's an, it's an interesting conversation, and I don't know the town well, but to have about, does this town really want average schools? 'Cause I think in these situations, you get what you pay for. And this town certainly has a fabulous reputation. The people my husband works with in Cambridge regularly say, "Oh, you live in Duxbury", and, you know, they say, "Oh, the Duxbury schools used to beat my high school football team." I mean, it's got a really positive, high-end reputation, but as the school starts to slide down in the rankings, that reputation, which was long-earned, I believe, is gonna start taking a hit with the realtors who said openly to me, "Oh, no, don't, not Cohasset", or "Not Situate, you don't want that one", or "Definitely not Marshfield", which I don't think are necessarily fair implications of those, of those school systems, but it is the impression that they had. And when they start to hear things from parents about my kids in a 31-person math class in the eighth grade, you know, that word of mouth is gonna travel.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, that was a lot of talking.
It was so wonderful, I mean, really, we're so grateful that you're here tonight, but also that you're engaged. Just my perspective at, at kind of a high level, um, around the table, and you heard two new department, um, curriculum coordinators, department chairs, we have a one-year, 10-year superintendent, we have a brand-new assistant superintendent, brand-new high school principal, two new, uh, one new assistant high school principal, new middle school, high school principal. So it's really fair to say, in a year, we have a complete renaissance in leadership in the school. And I think the school committee has done an outstanding job and prioritized to, uh, to recruit and retain the, the best possible superintendent to build the team for going forward.
Yep.
That was step one. I think that's been accomplished. Step two is, give our school leaders the opportunity to create a picture of the future.
Yep.
Because really, all of us are cheerleaders and champions of education, but we're not, we're not doing the job. Dr. Antonucci and his team and the faculty are doing the job, so this is the year that they're really focusing on where do we wanna go, and that's, I think, an important thing we communicate, we don't have a plan yet, because that's what they're starting to do. So when Dr. Antonucci said, "What we're looking to do is, at worst, tread water. We don't wanna continue to go backwards, we want a level service budget, but we think that's not going to be good enough, and that's not what the community wants, but we're not really prepared, and I don't think it would be fair to say, here is exactly where we think Duxbury should be and the resources required to get us there." So given the nature of this kind of a process, we have to be careful that we don't get people overly excited, and then we're like, "Well, how come you can't move faster?". I think it's, I, I really think, and I don't have experience, but I would say we're on track. This year, the appropriate thing is to ask for a level service, but that's probably not true next year, because I think we'll have a leadership team that's got a comprehensive plan, can make the case in the community, lay out what the, uh, impact is in terms of cost and expected benefits, and now we have something the community can really get behind. So that's, that's my perspective of, you know, from recruiting and hiring and building a team to keeping things going, to now developing a plan for the future, and then hopefully advocating the community and, and, and receiving support. I'm confident the community will support it, because I haven't been here for two years, but I didn't grow up here and I didn't come on the Mayflower, but I believe the people in the community are going to support a reasonable ask for the Duxbury schools to meet the needs of our students. And, uh, I think if we're going the way we're going, we're gonna fall short of that. So that's, that's my perspective, and to give a sense, um, we wanna, we want you engaged, but we don't want you to get discouraged because we're not moving fast enough. I think we have to be realistic about the timing.
Is there anything, is it okay if I ask that?
Sure.
Is there anything that we could do this year, before March, so that you don't have to make do with a level services budget, and so that those kids don't have to be in 30-person classrooms next year?
Well, the, the issue at the moment is that the revenue forecast for the town has been set, um, for fiscal year 2020. So for the school department to ask for more than level services, we're effectively asking to, um, scoop funds away from another town department.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
So that's the underpinning for the current position we're taking, which is that.
Right.
At the very least, we have to do what we do this year, again, next year. That we have to be able to serve our students the same way next year that we're, we're serving them this year. But as Dr. Antonucci said last night, and as we've been saying for a little while now, that, the, the town's revenue is, uh, forecast is, is not fixed, right? And Proposition Two and a Half does put a limit on the growth in revenue for a town from year to year, but it also gives the town's voters the opportunity to change that, to take a step change. So if that's, uh, if we want to change the school's revenue path, or the budget path for the schools, we're going to have to change the revenue path for the town.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's where we're headed, but it's not gonna happen for fiscal year 2020, because the horse is already out of the gate.
Okay.
But, um, I think that that's pretty much where we're going. And I suspect that there are other town departments who would also feel that they, their budget expectations over the next five years exceed the town's revenue forecast for the next five years. So it's not only the schools that are feeling under pressure in terms of budget growth. And the town, it, it seems to me personally, that the town does not have a plan for funding school budget growth at the pace that we would like to see it funded. So that's where we're heading at the moment, is to try and, um, gather people around and say, "Okay, how are we going to actually plan for the schools?", and for public safety. And for public safety, there, there doesn't seem to be a plan for, for public safety budget growth either. And so, and that's come about a bit through complacency, I think, on the part of, I think generally in the town. We're all really happy in Duxbury, and we think our schools are wonderful. And, and it's, as you say, it's easy to see a bit of an erosion without noticing it. And then all of a sudden, one has to wake up and say, actually, you know, that erosion has gotten beyond where, where it's acceptable. So we're at that point now where complacency has to change and, and plans have to change for the town. And, you know, if you read the newspaper, Envision, Duxbury's findings.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Duxbury is pretty healthy financially, the underpinning.
Yes.
Right? If you read about average income growth in the town, property value growth in the town. So, you know, you balance that very rosy picture with the fact that we're, our per-pupil spending is significantly below the state average, and it does beg the question, you know, at what point do we have to make a step change in how we fund our town?
Yes.
And within the town, how we fund the schools.
Chin. Hi.
Hi.
I don't want to get ahead of it, but I think, you know, one thing that you can be doing is talking to your neighbors, talking to people that you know in the town, especially people outside of the school community. To express, you know, to share with what you've learned about it and your concerns with it, because, you know, as we've been saying, you know, the field isn't set right now for this year. But if we're gonna be anticipating next year, I think, I think it is the time to start, start socializing the community to this concept that, you know, there might need to be a step change in the near future. Because I think, I think the timing could be an issue if we, if we don't start doing things like that now, and we start next fall, and we're not gonna be in time enough
Right.
For that year either.
Right.
So I think, you know, that is something that, that parents who are interested in being active should start thinking about. And we, we, obviously, the school committee, I think, would be happy to, you know, be involved and, and that, and that's where I'm, because I don't know, I don't know where it goes after that.
But that's not something, just for me, functionally, that's not an effort that the school committee would chair or drive. It would need to be a group outside of the school committee and also outside of the school administration. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna use a word, okay? I'm gonna use a word. So if we, if we ever had to make a, do a Proposition Two and a Half override, which is what we're talking about here, which by the way, is a mechanism that the law provided for, for towns to increase their, their tax base so they could fund town services, right? So it's become kind of a, a third real topic. But the reality is, it was a built-in mechanism, Prop Two and a Half, that 2.5% is extremely arbitrary. And I've talked to people who were there, you know, at its passage in 19, you know, in 1980. So I'm gonna use that word and say, and just confirm what you just said, or affirm what you just said, which is, that would be a campaign, a literal, a literal campaign. Now, I'm not afraid to say that. I've been through one, Dr. Klingon's been through one. It's extremely difficult, it's extremely emotional, it can be at least. So in terms of starting to talk about it, that's why I put it in my presentation. You know, no one likes to use a word, but if we don't use it now, we're, we're never gonna be able to have a, have a dialogue about it. So if and when that happens, and I think it's gonna be a win myself, although it's a decision well beyond me, it is a legitimate campaign, and that's when you need to kind of rally the troops and do a, you know, Shannon just, just said, which is, you know, start educating your friends and neighbors to get out and vote.
I was just gonna add, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think even informally now.
Yeah, I agree with you, 100%. Also, I think it's really super important to recognize, we heard the Finance Committee say that they were 300,000 below our level service funding for fiscal 20. We need every voice in the community to say that's not acceptable.
And how do we do that?
Well, you can talk to your friends, you can write letters to the Clipper, you can, you know, it's really grassroots advocacy, showing up at town meeting and speaking. But the point is, we have a big gap, we faced it, we can't spend all of our administrators' time and effort fighting over 100 or 200,000, but it's impactful in terms of our school budget, that's 1% of our budget. So it sounds very cavalier, although we're 300,000 apart, we need help to make sure that doesn't happen this year. So that's a starting point. And, and we, we put an enormous amount of effort, all of us last year, Dr. Antonucci in his first year, and we had to take a vote for unused tax levy of $104,000. And it was like, it was, it was so much effort, and at the end of the day, that was beneficial, but we were still 75,000 below level service funding. We really need help to make sure we don't start out being 300,000 below level funding. So I think that we need help with. And that's a, this year, longer term, is, yeah, I think the community needs to be engaged, but we need some help this year, because you heard it last night, you heard, we're, we're starting at a point which is gonna be tough in terms of management.
But again, that's not something the school committee would coordinate? That needs to be an independent group?
What, what I would like to see is chair a school committee, and I think everybody agrees, I would like to see letters to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Because they're the ones doing the revenue forecast, they're the ones saying that the town cannot support the schools at this point, because there just isn't any more money. But then I was encouraged because a couple members said, well, what is it that the schools need? You don't need four more million dollars, you need $100,000 or $200,000. And I feel like it's there and it's within reach, but for some reason, no, we can't do that. We don't have the money. So somebody needs to find out why we can't do that. And we certainly tried last year. So if we have enough community support, and, and maybe you'll get the answers that we're not getting, or you'll get a different answer, or maybe it'll be the same answer.
Well, I think you will get the answers. I mean, because there's two, I think, there were two things that, that really stood out to me from, from last night's meeting. And this was sort of the basis of my initial question to you. One is the gentleman that was sitting to the left of Betsy, I forget his name.
Jerry.
Oh, Frank.
Media left.
To, to our right.
Oh, to the right, Joe.
Fernando.
Fernando, yeah.
Fernando. He said a couple of things that were really interesting, I thought. One was, was he said, look, he said, you know, one of the reasons why we're having this meeting and wanting to have this dialogue is so we don't want to have a fight at the town meeting. Remember when he said that?
Yeah.
He also said, and I, I didn't get the words specifically, I should have written them down, but he said it in a very elegant way. He basically said, sort of the, you know, one of the main responsibilities of the Finance Committee is to assert the will of the voters in the town. We do fiscal, you know, basically assert fiscal action based on what the voters want. That's a powerful statement. He was right, right? So, you know, I think it was said a few minutes ago, there are a ton of committees in the town, all advocating for, you know, more funds and money to sort of, you know, survive and thrive. So everyone's asking. But to their own admission, they're asserting the will of the people in the town. So I don't think it's, I don't want you to walk away thinking it's like we're saying, well, you have to do it because we don't want to do it. It's, this really is a grassroots, sort of, to use John's word, a campaign in the people of the town to speak with a unified voice and make the priority very well-known. And then they kind of have to do it, I think, anyway. Sorry?
Yeah. Yeah, 10 meetings.
Well, I think it's going to more finance committee meetings, but, but again, it's, you know, it was sort of situational, like he said, well, we don't, we want to avoid a fight at the town meeting. I don't think he was being flip or whatever, I think he was sort of being honest. But I actually think it's beyond just going to more finance committee meetings and having what they might consider to be fights at the Finance Committee meetings. It's sort of having that sort of undertone of a unified, like, this is the priority of the majority of the people in the town, parents of the students and non-parents, you know, and, and, and other folks. This is why we moved to the town, this is where we think the, you know, the priorities have to be placed, this is why we made these decisions, this is what we want.
Right.
So you guys gotta do it.
I thought it was interesting, I actually reviewed the Envision Duxbury document this afternoon, after yesterday, and the, the number one item listed on, on their expectation for the town is that it has a high-performing school system. Number one.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no question about what the people of the town want and expect, and that's not a past need, and it's not a niche need. It's the number one response on their survey of the entire town, so.
So I was, I've been to three of the four PTOs. So I've been to talk to Chandler, Alden, and the high school PTO. And Dr. Antonucci and I are going to see the middle school PTO in a couple of weeks to talk about the budget and to put the budget in the context of town and municipal finance. And that's been a good start, and those organizations are already in place. So, you know, that, there's a foundation for focusing your efforts within those organizations.
Okay.
And letter writing is powerful. If you go to the town website, you know, on our website, we have email addresses, are all there. And the selectmen have an email address. The town moderator can be contacted through the website.
The town moderator appoints the Finance Committee.
He appoints the Finance Committee.
So that's a connection to the budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
So those types, and, and then the Clipper. So those types of grassroots efforts are, are hugely effective.
I'm not pandering, but people read the Clipper.
Yeah, but just to also, to amplify what Peter said, the, the other thing that's going on is, I, I, again, I think a unified voice from the people in the town can make a really huge difference. Also, the town, the people in the town having constant and consistent visibility into the progress that the team is making in the school system itself, I don't think that that can be overstated, right? Dr. Antonucci's first year was about setting a really great sort of foundation around leadership and staff. There's a lot of new, really talented people in the town that are responsible for the education. That was like a high priority at the beginning. And now we're having a lot more discussion, a lot more discussion around the, you know, the curriculum and the learning and, and all, and all of that. So it, it is, it is a process. I think both things have to happen at the same time. There needs to be awareness of that process so that people aren't thinking like, why the hell aren't we doing this? We are, it's just, it takes, it's, it's intentional and it takes time. Then there also has to be that advocacy around, you know, who sort of holds the purse strings and makes the sort of financial privatization in the town. I think those are the two things that have to happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Any, Martha, anybody else want to talk?
Can I just clarify then?
Yeah.
So the question, or the request that we're making in finance is to support John's bottom line number, the equity budget and the money for the community?
Yes.
That's our ask?
Yeah.
That would be a great ask.
This one, so I was the, the very first Finance Committee after, after the whole last year, the project, excuse me, just a second.
Do you want to come up here and talk on the mic?
Just because I was curious. And the gentleman they were just talking about, Lynn Greenwood, he, he was also saying at the kind of, the end of the meeting, that he felt, and I kind of, I kind of brought it up, that I thought maybe communication was part of the problem, because it did seem like clearly there was a communication issue last year as far with the money. But he brought up that maybe it would be good to have fi, someone from the Finance Committee sit in on, on school committee meetings and just start to open up communication and, you know, and I kind of caught it last night too, when, you know, talking about AP classes and the number of students, and there's 31, there's one class that has 31, like kind of clarifying and this, like the school committee, whether, you know, you don't want to go rabbit hole, but tipping your hand a little bit as far as, you know, here are, here are some of the facts and more layout, like, this is what we have for kids per classroom compared to, you know, the average, or what, or, or is there an expectation? I don't even, like, is there a set expectation for the state?
No, it's not, the state doesn't have any.
All right, that's right. I, I feel like I just remember when my kids were younger, there was kind of like, you never wanted to go over this, this amount. As they get older, I don't really know how that goes. But I just, I feel like to, because I kind of look at the Finance Committee and think, do they even want to increase the budget? And that, that's like, and getting past that, saying, I guess, how to like, communicating so that we, we are all on the same page, but letting them, I don't know, I guess, where I moved from, I've been here about four years, at, at one point at town meeting, they used to have the schools very involved at town meeting. The, the kids used to come in and, and sing the national anthem, things like that, like just to kind of expose the schools more in those meetings, because in those meetings, usually a lot of the people that are there are people that don't have kids in the school system. Think little things like that.
Yeah.
And just, and like, whether, it would be awesome if, like, I don't know if you guys would want, but to have a Finance Committee member sitting in each one of these meetings just so that they're more aware of stuff that we just saw and stuff like that.
They do come periodically, yeah.
They do.
I wanted to say, one of the things that was, I'm a numbers person.
Yeah.
Nobody agreed on the numbers, and there wasn't visibility on numbers.
Okay.
We worked really hard this year, we had a meeting joint with the selectmen, in fact, I think we had two meetings, where we actually, for the first time, had transparency on what the town's revenue forecast was. That had never happened before. But even last night, you heard numbers being panted around, you've hired 37 more people in the last five years, and we've been paying, you know, surplus for 20 years in a row.
Right.
We need to have agreement on the numbers.
Yeah.
This is a public.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess.
We haven't had that.
Yeah.
So we've been working on that. And I think we made progress, but we're still struggling with, numbers get thrown around. It's like, okay, let's, let's talk about.
There's a number of, the number of heads.
Yeah.
And where are they? Like, all right, we gave you a lot of heads and, and.
Yeah, so we're trying to, and there hasn't, historically, we haven't all been working off the same sets of numbers.
Okay.
And we're converging, but we're still not perfect yet, I'd say. Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of numbers and words thrown out last night that really didn't have much context to reality. But I will say this, though, we've been really trying hard to have these joint meetings, and they were productive. And I, and I think in many ways, it was really the town should feel proud that these boards were working together. Yet at the end of the day, they went ahead and made a decision about their revenue forecast that was so ultra-conservative that it's, that it's hamstringing us.
Yeah.
Right? So even after that meeting, they went ahead and kind of set a somewhat strict policy on their revenue forecast that, to me, it just, it just means that, it's, it's intentionally not allowing ourselves to fund our own town services. So it's, it was, and then last night, you know, some of the recommendations they made about how we should budget were honestly reckless and dangerous. And so like, there's a double standard there at the approach. And so it's frustrating. I think we've made great progress in a year, but it, it's still, I would just say, in my words, it's very frustrating.
The, the progress, progress has been made, but I, I second what John said completely. Because as I reflect on the meeting last night, I started, I started to think to myself, you know, there has been more open lines of communication between the two committees. Having said that, there's still gonna be, what won't change is that the school committee's priority is always gonna be around the well-being and the safety and the academic health of the students in the town. That's what our priority is, right? The Finance Committee's priority is to take steps that they feel are appropriate to manage the fiscal health of the town. And regardless of how much visibility and how much we understand the Finance Committee's, like, you know, sort of levers, and they understand about education, that we're never gonna sort of completely meet, because the, our priorities are, are different. And the evidence was yesterday, in that meeting yesterday, I was, you know, I was kind of like taking notes at a 60,000-foot view. And after John's presentation, essentially, the first response, and, and we're used to this, the first response was, well, you do have some advantages with the turnover situation and the first six, remember, and the seventh, sixth grade? So you have some. And we responded to that and said, okay, well, that's true to a certain extent, but essentially, it's negligible in the context of the, of, you know, sort of the overall situation. So then the response was, okay, well, then what do you want? So we basically said, well, here's what the priority, here's what we want. Well, then the third thing is, well, we really can't do that, because we, you know, our hands are tied with the ambulances and the blah, blah, blah. And then the fourth thing was, you know, the, the fourth thing again was, well, what do you want? And that's what a lot of our dialogue is. It's no one's fault, both parties, I think, are doing their jobs. The missing link, and Shannon, this is why I think what you said was so important, the missing link is that, is that town advocacy.
Yes.
That's where the priorities are. If enough people in the town speak with a unified voice and say, this is what our, this is where our priorities need to be, that's where I think, that, that's what's missing right now.
I guess it's, it's the town people telling the Finance Committee that, yes, we do want that 3.5% to 5% increase, and how, and how can we make it happen?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I think there's been an attitude or a, a narrative amongst some people that, as John was saying, an override, an operating override is a political third rail, that you just can't do it. And therefore, our revenue forecast for the town is tied to 2.5% plus whatever growth in housing stock happens. And, and of course, Peter, if you step back from that, that's simply not true. The town has the power to change that revenue forecast with intention through town meeting. It's just that no one's being prepared to assume that that's a possibility. It's just that no one's being prepared to assume that that's a possibility. They've taken as their kind of foundational notion that that's not on the table, and so it's up to the town now to put it on the table, basically, and say, well, you know, we actually do want great schools, and you know what, we're prepared to pay for them.
And just one little, mitty, last piece of advice, I've talked more tonight than I have in the first year and a half, but I'm in, but I'm in sales training, and so what you just said was, okay, so, you know, it's Lynn, right? So you said, like, okay, so we go to that, we go to the finding, and we go to the town, and we say, here's what we want, how do we make it happen? I wouldn't advise you say, how do we make it happen? Because that's going to beg, well, you, we can't make, here's why, right? So I would, rather than put it on them to say, how are we going to do this, they're going to have answers for that, I might just say, these are what our priorities are, full stop.
And don't get.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
My wife hates me because of that. I always say this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great. Anything else on the budget? We could go on and on.
That was excellent.
So we'll probably take a formal vote on the level service number in December, maybe the fifth or the nineteenth, if some miraculous information comes up that we can.
Christmas miracle.
Christmas miracle, more money. But I will say, it's frustrating, we did go through a lot last year, and we fought, and Martha, you did the fight with us, a lot of people, you know, it was really disheartening to a lot of us. And to me, it is almost insulting to sit in a meeting, which we have asked that all meetings be public now, so everybody knows what's going on, but it's a little bit insulting to have the superintendent questioned, it's almost an integrity issue. When Dr. Antonucci has come up with a completely transparent budget, for some of the questions that were asked, that A, maybe you didn't read the document, and B, I don't understand why you don't know the information, because to me, it's crystal clear. Right? So that's when I get a little bit, I get my Irish up, but, and I said last night, you know, I'm pragmatic, if the town is saying they don't have the money, but then you have people like Fernando saying, well, maybe we don't need a full override, maybe we can just do a little bit more each year. So I feel like there is room, and I don't know who or how to get that decision to be made. So that's where we're at, and we need some help, as everybody's advocated tonight, right, on how to get to that point.
Yeah, now, you know, here is, here is, I don't really think we've asked the community, and I just want to say, the six or five parents that are here tonight, it's the most we've had in three years at a school committee meeting, unless we are recognizing, like, honor students. The community supported a hundred and twenty-seven million dollar campus renewal, the community supported a three-hundred thousand dollar per year, one-point-two-million-dollar commitment on laptops. The community has done everything when asked. I think what's happened in this discussion is there was a perception in the community, things are going great, we have these beautiful facilities, there's a Mac laptop in every student's hand, and I think underneath it, there's been a sense for the people like us that have served on the school committee, that we're just not, those two things don't go hand-in-hand with paying teachers, making sure we have the right class sizes, making sure we support our teachers with training and professional development. So a campus renewal is a once-in-a-century, once-in-a-seventy-five-year-type process, but from a Duxbury taxpayer perspective, they've done everything we could have asked, but we haven't now, now we're asking, we're saying, okay, this is about the future of the Duxbury schools, and it's really about not bricks and mortar, not about hardware, technology, even software, it's about the really nitty-gritty operations of the school, harder to communicate in many ways, because people are like, well, it's going pretty well, you know, you know, my kids are getting into good schools, et cetera, so there, it's not like, and, you know, again, not tons of people show up at selectman meetings or Finance Committee meetings unless there's a really perceived need, we're saying, we believe there's a need in the schools.
Right.
That need, if it's unmet, is going to be really problematic. So it's kind of a call to action, and we're just at the point now where building, you know, advocacy is so important, talking to your friends, your peers, your neighbors, just sharing this perspective, that thank you for all you've done to support the schools and getting us to this point, but now we have to think about where we're going to be generationally in the next five, ten, fifteen years. So, so I think it's, and it's, you know, we're all the biggest champions, and I think all of us are so grateful of the support from the community, so we don't want to come across as being like, well, you just built the schools, you just gave us the laptops, now you have to give us programs to support. But, but they're two really different things, right? They really are two different things.
But if that's what you need, that's just come out.
Well, so, so, yeah, well, I have been, you know, I really personally haven't, I used to have hair a year ago, but, but I think the community broadly hasn't been asked. So that's what this process is, and the way, actually, the way it works, the Finance Committee doesn't actually approve the budget, the selectmen don't approve the budget, town meeting approves the budget.
Right.
But they only vote on the budget which is proposed by the Finance Committee. So the process is one in which, we can't go direct to the community, we have to actually build support, make a case, it's complex governance, civics would be handy, because this is really an exercise in civics, right? Where are the priorities, we have a limited amount of resources, where does the community want to invest those resources? So anyhow, I wanted to say, we are so grateful for what the community has done, but we have a need, and we want the community to help us step up and address the need going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
So when do you present the number, you had this one in March?
No, we actually take a formal vote of what we're going to put forward. So, so just some history, last year, we voted a different number than level service. We asked for the restoration of teachers, two-point-six teachers at the middle school, didn't get it, and didn't get level service. So this year, we have agreed that we're going to go with the level service number that Dr. Antonucci has produced for us, with clear transparency as to where every dollar is spent.
And that goes to the Finance, because that's the thing, the Finance Committee is on the first of the town meeting, and the Finance Committee is too late.
So we'll know ahead of time if they accept our number, or if they say, we can't, we're not going to meet it again, you can have, excuse me?
When will you know, like, I need to, I need to be in for a civics class.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm also a new resident, you know, so.
Welcome.
When, when will the Finance Committee sort of put forward the number that they're going to propose? Is it now?
No.
Last year, they did it around the end of November, it was, yeah.
They gave us a number.
You know, working to get some bachelor's support.
Yeah.
And, you know, I can write letters to the Finance Committee and the Clipper and other things, what's ours is online.
Well, now is a good time.
Now, or here?
Once we vote our budget, they should be able to say whether they can meet it or not, but.
They're not saying now. Is it now?
Yeah, so, no, because ours is three-point-four-eight, and they're saying you can have two-point-six.
The Finance Committee will recommend a budget and present it to the selectmen for a vote before Christmas, probably between December first and the fifteenth. Discussions will continue, discussions occurred the morning of town meeting to see if we could negotiate a compromise. The selectmen voted on a budget that the Finance Committee recommended that was different than the school committee voted, and we never closed the gap. That's why what happened at town meeting happened, but this will all happen in the next three to four weeks, that the selectmen will officially vote on a budget as recommended by the Finance Committee. So if you're interested in expressing your views to either selectmen or Finance Committee, now's the time.
Yeah, and we'll advertise quite a bit, actually, we have a new communication system, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's MailChimp, which is actually a marketing, and it's, it's been so effective. One of the things we can do now is track, how many people opens it, and how many people click on the links, and it's, it's been, I'm sort of obsessed with it, like, I've been fascinated by kind of tracking how many people are actually, actually opening it and reading it, and it is, it's a call to action, I mean, I think it's working. Yeah, video would be great, too.
I'm telling you, video, that's what people want.
But ultimately, that, I mean, the message is what Martha was saying, which is that we support Dr. Antonucci's budget as it was presented last night, as well as his capital budget proposal, which was presented to us a couple of weeks, or a few weeks ago, and it's going to be presented on.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So, you know, you can write in support of the numbers that are already out there, and that's, that's where the position is, really, I think.
So we'll know, and we can put something out, like, this was, this is our requested level service, and then once we get that number that they vote on in the next couple weeks, this is what the town is approving for the schools. And what, so you'll know. And that'll go, you know, the PTAs, you need us to come around and talk to, you know, PTA meetings again, but we can send it out to everybody in the community.
Okay.
Thank you. It's exciting, people at our meetings. So our next discussion item is the school committee goals, and I think, so Peter had added some, we have a Google document going, I think because we are all burnt out from last night and tonight, although it's a whole lot of fun, we're going to table it, and if you have comments, or want to just go on the Google Doc, and then we can vote on it next time.
All right. Good decision.
And maybe, I think Shannon sort of, or somebody was saying that maybe we have too many, maybe we can just sort of, which ones we don't even need. Maybe we have four or five really good, we have leadership goals, and we have communication goals, and then we have, we have professional development goals. And I personally think we only need the first of the professional development goal. I don't think, I think they say the same thing.
Right.
So, okay.
So maybe we each send you what we think are the top three or four.
Yeah, you can, I did this, yeah, do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yep. And then we'll, I'll try to put together a final document, and we can vote on it.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
Awesome. So no action items?
No action items tonight.
No action items.
Not voting on any, any other new, anything, new correspondence, business?
So can I just clarify, that the resolution that we're not taking, that is a resolution regarding a proposal for that site?
Yeah, so I think what we decided is, we're going to wait until there's an actual proposal.
Right, okay.
And then we will state our opinion on to whether we would support or not support that at the location of the Duxbury.
But we have no actual impact on the decision around the permit?
It is not a school committee decision.
No, it is a board of selectmen decision.
Exactly, so we are just opining on it, but we're not, we have no decision-making power.
Right, and I think it sort of came to be because the minute it hit social media, I was approached, like, you know, that we're a player in the town and the community, so people want to know how the schools feel about it.
Right.
Right? Because our kids, at least my daughter, with her really cool friends who goes to bench warmers or Fafars at least once a week, you know, that's the direct path, that's where